Ten, twenty, twenty-one. Roll call please.
Mayor Ta.
Yeah?
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Councilmember Ho.
Here.
And Councilmember Monzo.
Here.
All members of the council present.
Thank you so much. Next, we have salute to the flag will be Vice Man Nguyen and location will be Councilmember Ho. And please stand.
Please stand.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for.
Please remain standing. And bow your head. Heavenly Father, enable those who gather this evening to discharge their duties with honesty and integrity. May we all be blessed in the knowledge of your truth and sanctified in the observance of just laws. We ask your assistance in providing all those in attendance with what wisdom, understanding, strength, and patience. Bless and guide this evening's deliberations. Amen.
Amen.
Please be seated.
Thank you, Vice Man Nguyen and Councilmember Ho. Any report from City Attorney? We don't have any report from City Attorney. Expert communication, none. Any report from City Clerk, please?
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, I will be having my assistant, Abigail Akala. She's been with us for the last three years and she'll be running the meeting tonight, so I'm very excited for that opportunity for her. She's been obviously a critical member of our team and our organization, so please bear with us as we do this tonight. In addition, item five point two has been withdrawn from the agenda, so we won't be taking any action on that. And we also have our emergency services coordinator, Robert Acosta, who will be providing his COVID-19 updates.
Thank you so much.
Take it away, Robert.
Can you guys hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Ta, Council and staff. I've been asked again to provide another update on Operation Independence and the COVID response, and I'm happy to do so. For COVID first, the sustained improvement nationally and in the state of California, and more specifically in Orange County continues. The healthcare agencies can directly attribute the turnaround, at least partly, to the vaccination effort. Collectively, the pods in Orange County currently are delivering over eight thousand vaccines a day. Locally, if the metrics hold steady or improve for another week, we may and are likely to advance from the purple tier into the red tier as soon as March seventeenth. This will result in many local industries and businesses being allowed to expand capacity or resume operations. So that's very good news for us. If we don't make it by March seventeenth, it's very likely that we will be in the red tier the following Wednesday on March twenty-third. Or probably Tuesday, excuse me. Internally, the city has no reported cases for over a month now. And to date, we have zero cases of confirmed workplace transmission. The employees' efforts at masking, distancing, and just having a general COVID awareness has been key to the success of no workplace transmission. And it's something that they should be commended for. Operation Independence. The vaccine effort, as stated earlier, delivers over eight thousand vaccines a day. Contributing to the success of these efforts is Westminster's OCFA Division Chief Ron Roberts. He has been a critical component of these pods, acting as a pod director of the super pods. Additionally, the city of Westminster continues to do its part, as most cities are, by providing city employees to staff the pods. Employee wages will be reimbursed through the operational area mutual aid agreement. And this will effectively zero out the city's cost of participation. Currently, there are four active pods in Orange County. One's at Disneyland, one's at the Anaheim Convention Center, the Socha University one, and the San Ana College Potters are all up and operational. The next pod slated for operation is expected to be at the Orange County Fairgrounds. Staffing these is still seen as a critical need, and community members wishing to volunteer for these sites can do so at oneoc.com. I'm happy to report that earlier this week, we were given approval to host a mobile pod later this month. This county-supplied mobile pod will focus on senior citizens. And we are currently working with the incident management team on the details, and we should have an announcement later in the next few days of the location and the date. Additionally, in really a graphic demonstration of the dynamic environment that we are currently in, we were notified only yesterday that the city, in partnership with Walgreens, will be hosting a vaccine clinic this Sunday. This opportunity came to us outside of the county's usual supply chain and is supplied directly through the federal portal. This will allow us to vaccinate people over sixty-five, healthcare workers, essential frontline workers, school staffs, and congregate living facility staff. And this will be Sunday at City Hall. The Community Services Section has been a big part of securing these opportunities. Testing. The city of Westminster continues the onsite testing clinic at the City Hall. We're doing it five days a week now. Signups are requested and can be done on the Orange County Healthcare website where you make an appointment and show up and get tested, and you usually have your results in twenty-four hours. The Orange County Healthcare Agency and Operation Independence continue to provide us updates via conference calls three times a week. Everyone is working hard to deliver the most accurate information as becomes available to keep our communities, the staffs, and elected officials informed. The constantly changing environment does present unique challenges, and we will continue to do our best to meet these challenges. That's the end of the report. I'm available for questions.
Really appreciate your report. That amazing. A lot of really good news for our city and for our community. Really appreciate that. Any wish or concerns from member on the City Council? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have oral communication.
So this is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the City Council regarding any items on the agenda or non-agenda items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction. I did not receive any ecomments, so at this time, if anyone would like to speak during oral communications, please raise your hand, and you'll have a total of five minutes to address the City Council.
All right, so I'd like to open oral communication.
Okay, one question real quick. Am I the only one who get audio looks scratchy or? Just me? I guess just me. Okay. The audio is really scratchy for some reason.
No, I hear it also. But I think it was just Abigail's.
Yeah, it's only when Abigail spoke, just a little bit.
It's from everybody.
I got it. Not for everybody.
Work on that. It's really scratching.
Okay, I think because she's in close with the, she's in the conference room with council chambers. I don't know if the volume, not sure. We'll see if we can fix that.
All right, so Abigail, are you still there?
Yeah, we can resume. It's scratchy, very scratchy.
Okay.
So, Abigail?
Are you still there? Yes.
Okay, so.
Our first speaker will be Jody Boy.
All right.
Hi, good evening, everybody. This is Jody. And I would like to touch a little bit on Agenda Item seven point one, which came up through the Police Department, whether or not the Homelessness Task Force should be disbanded. And I just want to say that there are some serious considerations here. If the task force is reduced to only the five community members and we only have an advisory role, then what are we actually going to be doing? And I'd like to get a better sense of who, with the city of Westminster, is actively managing the day-to-day operations of the homelessness project. What has been accomplished during the last calendar year? Particularly, are we really following the full continuation of the rapid rehousing model? Where are the gaps? What are the milestones that are coming up that we're not ready for? And how is this going to fit into Westminster's plan for more development of, you know, smaller, more affordable housing units? Also, at the last meeting, when we were talking about the City Net report, it was represented that Police Member Upstil was going to see if City Net could be at this meeting to present and answer questions regarding their report. So I am wondering if City Net is represented at tonight's meeting. And I'd like to recommend that once a month, when their report is presented to the City Council and we citizens, I would really like to have City Net present the report themselves and answer questions. My concerns are, the report doesn't tell the whole story. So, you know, and I pointed out a couple of concerns at the last meeting, so I won't be redundant. So I just have concerns, you know, overall, and I think that it is appropriate that the City Council discuss what they really want to see just in terms of tackling our homelessness problem and actually getting it solved and getting the right pieces in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Terry Rains.
Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. Thank you, Councilman Manzo, for requesting Item five point one, a resolution denouncing coronavirus discrimination against Asians and Asian Americans. Ironic, isn't it, that the only non-Asian council member brought this forward? It will be interesting to see if Westminster is still home to the largest Vietnamese-American community outside of Vietnam once the 2020 census is finalized, because I think San Jose may take that title. Thank you, Councilman Doe, for Item five point two, requesting that the city manager review all city policies, even though it was removed from the agenda. It was a fair request, but I also understand staff's request for direction regarding the scope and prioritization of their review, and I have some suggestions. The city has had a significant number of employee lawsuits, and most were initiated by employees of the Police Department. My recommendation is to prioritize the city manager's policy review accordingly with assistance from the City Attorney's Office. First up should be personnel policies related to employment harassment, conflict of interest, code of ethics, employment records, disciplinary actions, grievances, substance use benefits, and other policies applicable to city employees. Four of the city's six department head positions, including the Chief of Police, are vacant right now, so this would be a great time to review and amend these policies. Next up should be certain Police Department policies, again focusing on personnel and promotion matters, both within and outside of Lexington, including related MOU and informational bulletin policies. A policy compliance review within the department might also be warranted. After that, council and administrative policies should be reviewed. The policy review process should be transparent to the public with regular updates provided during City Council meetings. Item seven point one, staff is asking council to reconsider disbanding or restructuring the homelessness task force. I have attended all the task force meetings to date, plus several county and nonprofit meetings on the homelessness issue. Our task force recommended an emergency shelter with supportive services and partnering with other agencies. Now that many new emergency shelters have come online in the county, the focus and available funding has shifted more toward permanent housing solutions aligning with the Housing First model. Emergency shelters are not the cure-all to end homelessness. In fact, they are the most expensive, least effective, and most often rejected option by those experiencing homelessness who need a place to call home, not just a cot, and ongoing assistance, which permanent supportive housing provides. There is a sizable learning curve for residents on this very complex issue. Having field experts on the task force was key to its success. Those field experts are understandably no longer available, and I do not think a five-resident-only task force would be effective to tackle this issue any further. But I do encourage residents to learn all they can about this issue and advocate for workable solutions. We need more current and detailed data on the current state of homelessness in our city. And I've made recommendations on how City Net and the PD can assist with this, like Jody. Hopefully, we will be able to do a complete point-in-time count soon and not have to wait another two years. City staff must stay on top of this issue and proactively explore new options and funding, such as partnerships with the county nonprofit organizations and developers to create permanent housing solutions. I'm attending an event about the complex financing of permanent supportive housing in Orange County on March twenty-fifth. Item seven point two is round two of appointments to city boards and commissions. Mayor Ta and Councilman Nguyen deferred their appointments instead of appointing qualified applicants on file. Mayor Ta reappointed someone to the Traffic Commission only to have that person resign two weeks later. And Councilwoman Ho appointed someone who had not even reapplied. They appoint people to apply, even if not interested, just so they can appoint them. Why is that? I continue to obtain and share emails via public records requests related to Steve Sheldon and the Civic Center project. Each new batch reveals more rude and disrespectful behavior from Sheldon, yet certain council members can continue to coddle him. Enough is enough. And lastly, some legal updates. Number one, the DA's office confirmed on Friday that the investigation into Councilwoman Kimberly Ho's fraudulent vote center is still ongoing now, one hundred and twenty-eight days into it. Number two, the head of the DA's Court Special Prosecutions Unit confirmed on February twenty-fifth that they are still reviewing evidence submitted last year regarding allegations of perjury and residency fraud by Westminster School District Trustee Francis Nguyen. And number three, former Westminster School District Trustee Xavier Nguyen had another court date on February twenty-six related to three felony charges filed against him by the DA, also related to perjury and residency fraud. A pre-trial settlement conference is set for April twenty-ninth. And if the case is not resolved during that conference, a preliminary hearing is scheduled for May thirteenth, during which time the DA may decide to call witnesses to testify to establish probable cause that Mr. Nguyen committed the alleged offenses. So stay tuned, everyone. Thank you, and welcome to our interim chief.
All right, so do we have any? Any other speaker?
There are no additional speakers.
Thank you. So then I close oral communication. Next, consent calendar or matters list under the consent calendar, I consider routine and maybe approved by a single motion, followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless member of the City Council or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussion.
We'll just.
All right. So may I have a second? Second?
I'd like to. I'd like to pull the three point three.
All right, so Vice Mayor requests to pull three point three. So who make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, so Councilmember Manzo?
I think.
Three point three, right? Am I right?
Yes.
Okay, so I second that.
Well, this is a motion to approve the balance, everything except for three point three, correct?
Correct.
A second.
Okay.
So to clarify, I had a motion by Councilmember Monzo and a second by Mayor Ta. That was to approve the consent calendar except item three point three. Roll call. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. So Item three point three, West Orange County Water Board Annual Operational Budget for Fiscal Year Twenty-One and Twenty-Two. Vice Man Nguyen?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm City Manager and myself, the city on West Orange County Water Board. And in the last meeting, we discussed about annual operation budget for the fiscal year of twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. And I'd like to have a stop report to see City Manager go ahead and update you on the budget that we are about to approve. City Manager?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Again, this item, as Councilman Nguyen just mentioned, it's really the West Orange County Water Board organization that Councilman Nguyen and myself attend their meetings. And what this is, is really, as you know, we get our water partially from the underground basin through our wells. And then also, we get it through the Metropolitan Water District through three water lines that comes into our city. One of them joined our city at Westminster Willow, and one is Bolson Yulin, and one near the Dale and Catella. Now, the Dale and Catella connection is maintained by our city staff. However, the two other lines are maintained by the city of Huntington Beach. And these lines serve really Westminster, Garding Grove, Seal Beach, and Huntington Beach. Of course, in order to maintain those lines, they need a yearly budget for O and M, operation and maintenance. That budget usually is broken down into the cities based on how much benefit every city gets from them. Our share is twenty-five point four percent of that, and that comes to about thirty-one thousand dollars a year. Now, in addition to this, because you know the amount we're asking for is two eighty-five. Now, in addition to this thirty thousand dollars a year, those two lines are over fifty, sixty years old, and we anticipate them going bad within the next ten years or so. If we let them go bad, it's gonna be millions of dollars to replace. And then therefore, we will get twenty-five point four percent of that cost. So instead of doing that, the group and the committee and the board decided to go into some maintenance work within the form of cathartic protection. And what that is very simply is they attach an electric current to the existing steel pipe that will protect it from further rusting. And that, because of the amount of money it needs, we decided to break it over the next eight years. So this is year two. Last year, we budgeted first year. This is year two of eight years, and then next year will be year three until the eight years are budgeted, then the work will be done. So the total budget, our share of this year is two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. And this money, this cost, was part of the water rate that you just approved last meeting. So it's not gonna affect the general fund by no means. And then this is just keeping our water system intact and looking for the future. And that's all. That's all I have. Do, City Manager, for your report. Really appreciate that. Any other question from member of the City Council regarding this item?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The City Manager, so you're saying the work will not start until after all the payments are complete?
Yes, yes. The board decided that let's collect all the money first, so we make the cities make payments, so we don't have to pay it all at once, and then work will be done after that.
And then after that, you have an estimated time of completion, how long it would take to complete it?
It's, I think, within a year, within one year that can be done. It's not gonna take like five, six years to do, no. I think within one year time, that work can be done. Because all the work is gonna be from inside. There's no need to dig anything. It's gonna be from inside the pipe.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there is no other questions, I'd like to move to approve the item three point three.
A second.
All right, we have the motion made by Vice Man Nguyen and second by Councilmember Manzo.
Okay, and that's to approve the West Orange County Water Board's fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget shared between Huntington Beach, Seal Beach, and Garding Grove, which includes Westminster's share of two hundred eighty-five thousand four hundred ninety-six. So roll call, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. Next item, regular basis. Item five point one, resolution denouncing coronavirus discrimination against Asian and Asian Americans. This is a really good item, and I really want to thank Councilmember Manzo for initiating the idea. And want to thank staff for to do the resolution. So any question or concerns? If not, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I'll second it. I just want to thank council for their support in this. I'm sure we all agree that, you know, in our society and our community, there's no room for hate and discrimination. And right now, with this COVID, as the resolution states, there's no borders when it comes to ethnicity. This virus has affected all of us. And we need to stand with our Asian community in solidarity and speak up against any discrimination that's directed towards anybody in the Asian community. And I'd like to also ask that if staff can post or make some announcements on our website or marquee or wherever, have communication encouraging residents to report any situation that they witness to the proper authorities. So, yeah, so thank you very much for supporting this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and just to add to that, we actually will be having a press release go out tomorrow regarding this resolution, and we are working with a translator service that we work with for our election materials. They'll be translating the resolution as well into Vietnamese.
Okay, thank you.
Very well. Thank you.
Roll call vote?
So I had a motion by Councilmember Ho and a second from Councilmember Monzo, and that was to adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council, the City of Westminster, Denouncing Coronavirus COVID-19 Discrimination Against Asians and Asian Americans." Councilmember Doe?
Yes, can we have the resolution read? Later?
Can we, yeah, it's a good idea. Can we have our city clerk read it since she reported it and we put it together first?
Sure.
Can you read that?
Yeah, would you guys like to finish the vote first and then?
Okay. Yeah, you're right. You're right. Yeah.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
So, Abigail, you want to read that or?
Christine will read that resolution.
I will gladly read it.
Okay.
Okay, so this is "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, Denouncing Coronavirus COVID-19 Discrimination Against Asians and Asian Americans. Whereas, the mission of the City of Westminster is providing the highest quality of service, ensuring that Westminster is a desirable place to live, work, play, and do business. And whereas, the growth of the Asian community in the City of Westminster has greatly contributed to the economic growth and success of the city. And whereas, Westminster is home to Little Saigon, the largest Vietnamese-American community in the world outside of Vietnam. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic has led to unprecedented measures being taken to prevent the spread of the virus, including sheltering in place, physical distancing, and restrictions on gatherings and business operations, which have led to public stress and anxiety. And whereas, many of Westminster's essential workers at the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic in healthcare, first response, supermarkets, and other service industries are of Asian descent. And whereas, the use of anti-Asian terminology and rhetoric related to COVID-19 have perpetuated anti-Asian stigma. Whereas, the increased use of anti-Asian rhetoric has resulted in Asians and Asian Americans being harassed, assaulted, and scapegoated for the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, scientists have confirmed that COVID-19 does not respect borders and is not caused by ethnicity, and the World Health Organization has cautioned against using geographic descriptors because they can fuel ethnic discrimination. And whereas, it is important that the city take leadership and stand in solidarity with its Asian-American communities to send a message that discriminatory and hate-motivated behavior will not be tolerated. Now, therefore, the Mayor and City Council of Now therefore, the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster hereby resolve as follows. The Westminster City Council strongly condemns and denounces any anti-Asian sentiment in any form. The Westminster City Council recognizes a racially inclusive environment is essential to the health and safety of all its residents. The Westminster City Council calls on local law enforcement to work with state and federal law enforcement officials to investigate and document all credible reports of COVID-nineteen-related hate crimes and threats. And this is passed, approved, and adopted this tenth day of March twenty twenty-one."
Thank you so much, really good.
Yes, thank you, Christine. Thank you for your help in preparing it for us.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
All right, uh, next item, six point one, resolution reaffirming proclamation number twenty, twenty dot zero one, and resolution number four nine eight three, which declared the system of the local emergency. Is that the resolution that we have to reaffirm like every six month?
Every, we do this every sixty days.
Oh, every sixty days.
Every sixty days. So this is actually our sixth adoption of this.
Wow, okay. All right, so may I have a motion?
Move, move to approve.
A second.
Okay, we have the motion made by Vice Man Win and second by Councilmember Doe.
And that's to adopt a resolution entitled "The Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, Reaffirming Proclamation Number Twenty Twenty Dash Zero One and Resolution Number Four Nine Eight Three, Which Declared the Existence of a Local Emergency." Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yeah.
Councilmember Monzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Tom.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Next, commission and committee item, restructuring of this Westminster homeless name, task folks. So would like to give a report, City Clerk or Deputy Chief.
Um, I guess I'll go ahead and start with that. So, since the Westminster Homeless Task Force, uh, was created in two thousand nineteen, uh, the City Council basically created this task force with the, um, with the intent of studying the feasibility of creating an emergency shelter. Uh, since then, a, a com- a committee has, you know, was created. There were sixteen members of that, uh, of that committee, which included various members of, um, some organizations as well as council-appointed, um, council-appointed members. Uh, that being said, uh, a report was provided and recommendations were given last year from the homelessness task force, uh, regarding the shelter. Um, at the time, it was staff's recommendation to disband the committee. Uh, Council, um, this supported the idea of keeping the committee. Um, we've reached out to members of the original committee, and many of them had expressed that they were no longer interested in serving, uh, on a regular basis, uh, feeling that they, um, they had already fulfilled, you know, the purpose of the committee. But of course, they would, um, come on and, and help and, and assist and provide resources, um, if called upon. Uh, we've, uh, since appointed members to the committee, but we are still struggling to, uh, have a quorum in order to meet. So at this time, we would like Council to consider, um, this committee. Uh, you have options, uh, potentially of disbanding the committee, which would then, um, allow, uh, you know, a faith-based group or community-based group to potentially take over some of the, um, you know, some of the, uh, ideas and efforts in the city, uh, regarding homelessness. Or you can maintain the committee if you'd like, um, but we would recommend that you reduce it, uh, reduce the membership down, um, to potentially your five council appointees. Now, if you do decide to keep the committee, then we would also ask, uh, that you take a look at the, uh, the bylaws or the scope of the committee to define what it is that you would like the committee to do. Now, just to, just to be clear, the existence of the committee doesn't prevent or affect uh, staff or our homeless liaison officers or, um, you know, this agency from obviously pursuing, you know, any, um, interests regarding, you know, homelessness issues or, um, looking at additional resources, et cetera. Uh, the homelessness task force was created as, simply as a, uh, as an advisory committee. Uh, that being said, if Deputy Chief has anything he'd like to add?
Thank you. I would just say that I had the opportunity to speak with the faith-based group, um, and reached out and talked to them and regarding their, um, participation and willingness to move forward and to bring members, um, or past members of the task force along to work, uh, in conjunction, of course, with the police department itself. Uh, there's a lot of momentum, a lot of enthusiasm. Of course, COVID has restricted that lately, but I think we're moving in the right direction to move forward and, uh, to do what's best for the city and, and to explore many options that the community, the police department, and task force members can do to, uh, to, to improve the homelessness. So that's what I have to add.
Yeah, I have a question for Deputy Chief Absteez. So based on your experience in the last few years that you had a great opportunity to work with all the members of this committee, so what would you recommend? You recommend that we would be lose a member of this committee, or you think that we, you believe the City Council, we should keep, you know, all the member, the same? I want to hear from you first.
Sure. So I was not directly, uh, a part of the, uh, homeless committee before, um, but I, I, I was familiar with it. And so, um, you know, speak, after speaking with the faith-based group and talking to them, um, and knowing that the ability to meet more frequently where it's not so, um, there's not issues regarding the Brown Act and things like that, would free up the opportunity to work um, with members of the faith-based group and members who just wanna be part of the, uh, the solution, including the members of the task force. And so that might be more of an efficient way. Uh, we're just trying to look at, a- and that would be my recommendation right now, would be to move in that direction. Um, and again, the police department is, supports any idea, um, but that's where we're moving to, and especially, uh, talking to our homeless liaison officers, uh, getting their input and including, uh, Commander McCormick as well.
Thank you so much. Any question for, uh, Member City Council, Councilmember Doe?
Yes, Mayor.
Oh.
Can we hear, oh, it's me, uh, me. Can we hear from Alexa, since she worked, she worked directly with the task force previously?
Okay.
I mean, her thoughts behind, on this?
Please. Alexa?
Yeah, hi. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I, I would agree with everything that, um, that Darren just said. I do believe that there's, um, a good reason to, you know, kind of give this group some freedom outside of, you know, these, the formal meetings and, and agendas and, uh, you know, all of that kind of stuff to, to work with this faith-based group, to be able to be, you know, out in the community and, you know, to get to get, get themselves together on a Saturday and, you know, work, work towards what, what they wanna do as opposed to everything, you know, really being very heavily reliant on, on, you know, staff scheduling issues and, and so forth. So, um, I, I agree, there's, there's a great need for, um, community involvement in this issue. It is going to take everyone. And, um, I've been able to attend, you know, a few of the faith-based groups' meetings that, that occurred, you know, pre-pandemic. They're a very motivated group. They're trying really hard to, to get organized. They started a website. Um, they're, and they want to, you know, also be a, a home and a resource for, for this issue. So I think combining the group and allowing, you know, community members to, to join and participate, you know, to the level that they're able to, is, is gonna be a good benefit. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you so much. So basically, that you recommend that we, uh, we not go to keep these, uh, committee, because there are so many member and, and every time you stop or try to schedule a meeting, that's going to be an issue. Am I right? Alexa or Deputy Chief?
Yeah, it, it certainly puts constraints on, on the group in many ways, um, and, and staff as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Doe?
Yeah, um, I am, uh, I, I like the idea, but I have a couple of questions in the detail. Uh, okay, first of all, the faith-based group, uh, how many member in that group? And can you name a few names of, uh, those religious leaders? And who was the, uh, who's in charge of that group? And who runs that group? And if they meet without the city staff uh, involved, how do we know what's actually going on in, in, in those meetings?
I can't name names off the top of my head, uh, other than, than Aaron Bull, who was also, uh, an official appointee on the task force. Um, and he's, he has really kind of demonstrated some leadership amongst the faith-based groups. So he was, um, generally leading the meetings, I guess. Uh, the ones I attended, I would say there were, you know, eight to ten different churches that, that were in attendance. Um, you know, a couple rotated in and out. I think, you know, a total of maybe fourteen were overall involved. Um, Darren may know better, but that, that sort of rings true to me right now.
Yeah, I spoke, I spoke to Aaron directly, um, and he seems to be the one that's spearheading this. Um, and he says that there's still a, uh, is still a lot of enthusiasm with the group and with the different, um, members to continue with the faith-based group. Um, there's ideas even bringing business owners and business members in there to, to have them part of it and to, to get their ideas on how they can help with the process and stuff. And so, I unfortunately can't, I can't name anybody besides Aaron, um, because I spoke to him directly last week to, to just make sure that there was still enthusiasm and participation with the group, and it's, it's, it's strong. Um, and, and I'm following up with him next week.
I have a question for, uh, City Attorney, that if we don't keep this committee, so how can we get a report from this, uh, group? I mean, either, if in the future, I know that they are good people and they want to have a meeting, they want to contribute an idea, but I mean, like, as a, uh, uh, City Council, we would like to hear from, uh, uh, committee members. So how can we get a report if we don't have the official city committee?
Um, I, I was hearing that potentially the police department had some interaction with this group or, or facilitating, helping to facilitate meetings or no? Is, because that might be one point of interaction where we could communicate back and forth.
Yes, we, we would help facilitate meetings, um, and be, been participating in that, um, you know, providing a venue, um, an area that we can do in our, um, EOC center. So we, we could help facilitate meetings, um, through that.
And I suppose you could communicate on behalf of the council that we would like to hear occasionally from them as to the issues they're working on, important issues that they feel they wanna bring to the council's attention.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, that's good. Any other question from Member City Council?
Uh, I have a question. Let me finish my, uh, train of thought real quick. So, so are they gonna serve as advisory to the homeless task force? Or how do we officially collect their idea and/or disseminate idea and ask for help? And then, and how, how, how do, how I, how are we gonna have to deal with this particular group? Uh, to get direction, to implement policy and honest stuff? Who, who gonna run this? The city, uh, staff?
So I, I, PD will be participating and they will ask staff liaison, I think, my understanding. But, um, in terms of, you know, I think, I think the interaction overall will change. I think the idea is that this group is, is going to be taking action, um, themselves as, as a community-based group, as a faith-based group. One of the projects, one of the things the faith-based group was working on was trying to figure out how to share resources. Which churches are giving out food? Which churches offer showers? Um, and, and coordinate that amongst themselves so that they, you know, can have a little bit more of a, um, an information source to the homeless population, for example, so that everyone knows on Tuesday you can go here and on Wednesday you can go here. So that, um, that work is, I mean, is already being done. It's just not necessarily happening in a coordinated fashion. So by adding on community members to, to these organizations, it allows them to, you know, kind of take action themselves. Okay, here's, here's the things that, that we know can be done. And there's gonna be, you know, things like, you know, I, low-hanging fruit, if you will, though, you know, like a coordination effort, building up a website. And then there will be also things that they're like, that they can think about and say, you know what? We also wanna take this on. And can we, as a group, um, manage this task? Do we need to ask the city, um, for, for assistance in some way? So I, I think the idea is really to try to put more of the impetus on the group to, to, to engage and, and figure out, you know, what they would like to do to move forward as a community organization.
So, so right now, if we, uh, with, uh, with, uh, the council agreed to go forward, so the PD gonna take a spearheaded and take the lead to, uh, staff with communication with this group? And, uh, is that correct?
That's correct. I, uh, well, Darren can answer.
Uh, the Deputy Chief, uh, Absteez, uh, you mentioned there's like twelve churches, uh, involved. Uh, was there any, the local temple, either in Westminster or Garden Grove, uh, participating in this group at all?
I don't know how many churches, certainly, I don't know, but I could certainly ask Aaron, reach out. And those who haven't been reached out to, we can, we can go out and, and, and go to the temples and stuff like that. That's, that's not a problem. I couldn't accurately tell you how many current, uh, churches or stuff are involved in it, but the more, the bu- the more, the better, um, for us. And, and for as far as the PD, um, yes, we can spearhead and, and, and help organize meetings and, and things like that and, and, and move, and help move it forward. I mean, it's gonna be a joint effort, but again, we, we, we can be there to, um, help guide the process. And, you know, they're very, they're very, uh, I mean, they're already doing it, essentially, you know, unfortunately COVID, um, you know, we're sw- through restrictions, but I think it will be easy to pick back up. And then with the enthusiastic members of the community that wanna be part of this, um, I think it's just a great step forward and, and, um, coming to some solutions and some help that we all need.
Okay, well, um, but so far on the top, you had, there's no, uh, local temples, uh?
Not that I'm aware of, no, not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of, no.
Thank you.
Councilmember Menzo?
Yes, thank you. So, yeah, I like that idea that, um, we make it a lot easier. And, you know, o- obviously you wanna from, uh, support this effort, and we need all the help we can get. Uh, this is a very important subject. Um, but I also wanna make sure that we're in contact with them. I don't know if the council wants to set, um, a monthly report or bimonthly report. I don't know if the council would want, how often we wanna hear from them. Um, but we do wanna hear from them and what actions we can take to, to, um, help the situation either. Um, but we definitely wanna, I think we need to set up in a time that we wanna hear from them, monthly or bimonthly, whatever council um, kind, comes up with. I, I don't know if monthly is too, uh, Deputy Absteez, I don't know if monthly is okay, or is it bi-monthly? I mean, what do you suggest?
Um, once the, once the, the program gets underway, I, I would probably suggest maybe once every two, two months, um, or go from there and kind of just see what type of progress is being made. But I, I do agree with the idea that, that, you know, some type of short presentation or update to council, um, to, to give it, to give you guys confidence that it's moving in the right direction and we're doing things, I think would be, is, is a great idea. And, and on top of that, um, you know, with City Net giving their updates and stuff, um, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and I really appreciate that Councilmember Menzo initiated the idea that, you know, you know, it's really helpful if the City Council, we hear from the group like every other two months. And if the group, uh, they really need anything from us, you know, I think that we have a resource, and I think we're willing to help. But I wanted to thanks, uh, our police department for continue to, uh, engage with the good, uh, group of people, yeah.
Okay.
So, uh, right now, any, any other question or concerns? But I think that City Council, based on the recommendation from staff, so we have to disband the committee, am I right?
We're gonna just reduce it, aren't we, to the five members?
Are we going to reduce, or are we going to like, won't keep a rule?
Um, I feel we need to keep the group and reduce it to five, the five members. And, um, support them and help them, have, have them work directly with the faith-based groups as far as um, what they can do, like, uh, Alexa, um, was speaking the low hanging fruit. What can we do immediate, what can they do immediately? And then it's all- And then it's also look into a more permanent solution. And then also, I would like to see them work on what grants, I know there's grants out there, what kind of grants they can we can go after to for some some programs. So, yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea and having me at like, Deputy Chief Upstill mentioned at the police department somewhere and have a report every bimonthly or even sooner, if the if the task force thinks that we should hear from them sooner than albeit, then we'll take the reports as how they feel. If they feel we need to hear some hear from them sooner, then that's fine, too.
I have a question for city attorney, if we reduce the member of the committee to five member appointed by city council only, so they don't, they don't have to be bow by Brown Act rule, am I right?
Yes, it it would be subject to the Brown Act. I think the the intent of at least staff's recommendation, it would be to disband the committee. And then to allow this organization, which is a private organization, not formed by the city council, but we're facilitating their meetings. Just they're allowing us them the opportunity to come into the police building or and wherever this is located. But it would be a private organization, so there would be no Brown Act rules if you disbanded the committee. If you keep the committee intact, then you're going to have two committees. One is the private one, which is not subject to the Brown Act, and then you'd have this five-member committee, which would be subject to the Brown Act, would have to post an agenda. The the issue that staff raised on that, if you do that, then we would ask that you clearly state what that group's supposed to do. They could work with this other private faith-based group, I suppose. But they should get some direction from you as to what they're going to do. So again, the recommendation is to disband, but there's always that option to leave the committee and reduce the size down to five. But then just give some instruction as to what you want that group to to look into.
I can also add to that as well. Let's say if this, if you would like this committee, even if it's reduced down to five, you invite them to meet with the faith-based group. Knowing that there's a quorum of that committee, that meeting then becomes now brown acted, so they would have to have an agenda and minutes and you know, if 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 an entire, if a majority at some point shows up at any of these meetings, you would, you would technically have a quorum.
So even that we try to reduce only five member appointed by the city council is still bow by Brown Act.
Absolutely, absolutely. So let's say, let's say, you know, you still have your committee, you just have to make sure that no more than, you know, no more than two show up at at the same time at a subsequent meeting.
I see, I understand. So now it's really, it's really up to the city council, yeah.
I I just want to follow up with the idea that the comment that council member Menzo brought up that we do have some funding from from the development. Is that true? And and how much do we have?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Oh, as far as I was reading on the League of California Cities, they they identified some some grants available out there, but that would be up to we would need some direction from staff as far as what, what we can go after. I know the two obvious ones is CDBG and Home, but I seen they have some other ones out there that they obviously that we would have to put some sort of program together that so we can qualify for those grants, as far as I understand. But that's something that it's out there, but not necessarily mean that that we can secure. And I'm assuming we have to have a program and so we can put our application together so we can secure the possible grant.
So maybe Alexa or somebody can answer that, how much money that we have, you know, reserved for the homeless, you know, for us to taking care of that issues. I I don't know that if there's any budget available for that. If I remember correctly, we did mention about the funding for that from the CBD fund, is that correct?
So for CDBG, you can utilize those funds to build permanent housing. So say, permanent supportive housing. You cannot utilize those funds to build an emergency shelter. That's considered temporary housing is not allowable use under CDBG. CDBG wants permanent funds, so do so does home funds. So I I have not read the article that that council member Monzo was referring to, so I can take some guesses here, but yes, CDBG and and Home are are formulaic allocations to the city. Other opportunities that I've seen so far generally filter through the county and the continuums of care. They're typically not something a city can go after. That doesn't mean they don't exist. As I said, I haven't read that that article, but that's usually how homelessness funds flow. There are opportunities for affordable housing. We do have some affordable housing funds sitting in the Housing Authority. We're actually at the next council meeting, we'll be bringing back to you the annual allocation for CDBG and Home, and we are recommending that we basically hold on to our home funds in order to be able to fund projects for for affordable housing. So that that component of it, we definitely do work on. I met with the county last week and again this week, looking at the new funding that's coming out for project Home Key, which is the motel and hotel conversion project. So staff is absolutely actively working, particularly on the affordable housing front. As with regards to emergency shelters, that's that's kind of a different topic. So there's, there's two pieces there.
Okay, so right now a city club informed me there's one member on the homelessness task force would like to speak. So please speak.
Thank you, Mayor Todd. This is Jody, and I was recently appointed to the task force. One of my questions, and I think it should be answered, within the city, what is the name of the person? Where does the buck stop? Ultimately, who with the city is responsible? Or if we had a project manager, who is responsible for overseeing this whole effort?
So who would like to respond to that concern, city staff?
There's no good answer to that. That's going to be the city manager, quite honestly. I mean, all bucks stuck with him, right? But because of the constraints on staff, this has been diffused amongst different departments. So community services takes a role, PD is taking a role because they have the homeless liaison officers, they are involved. Our family resource center is very, very actively involved. And then housing falls into community development, so both Michael, our housing specialist and I are involved.
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, it depends on the direction that the council give us tonight. Then I will definitely meet with the departments and we'll together discuss that and decide who's going to spearhead this. That that should not be a problem, just after we hear the direction from you tonight. Boy, is that, is that answer for your question?
I would just like to point out, I think that that is one of our most fundable issue, fundamental issues is no one has been driving this. And I understand that everybody got busy and distracted with COVID. But in the meantime, we do have people sleeping and living on the streets and, you know, we're not helping them. So, you know, we need somebody in the driver's seat coordinating everybody. And, you know, making sure we've got goals and milestones and that the train is moving forward. And that we got to report on this every single month, otherwise we're just not going to get anywhere.
Mayor and council, if if I may add to some of these points and concerns that we're having regarding a faith-based community and community, you know, effort. I worked for another city that had a coordinated effort. It was a it was called a Network for Homeless Solutions. It essentially was it started off with council direction about ten years ago, looking at homelessness issues. And what resulted from that was a collaboration of local churches, nonprofit groups that drove what ultimately became that Network for Homeless Solutions. And so what this, what this program was, it was driven by the nonprofit groups and the local churches and they were, you know, they were making coordinated efforts to you know, showers and, you know, lockers and how to, you know, provide resources to get bus tickets for people to reconnect with their families. They had a a reconnections program. This group would meet every week in, you know, at city hall. Part of that group also included myself. It included the social workers that were in the city who are equivalent to our homeless liaison officers. You would have the assistant city manager, or we had two assistant city managers. So one of the assistant city managers, he was the person that was primarily driving it on in the city, you know, in a city perspective. So we would provide what resources that we could, we would report to city council in conjunction with the group, we would provide, you know, at one point, weekly newsletters, we would provide, you know, weekly reports, we would, you know, send emails to the council. So it was even though it was a process and an effort that was primarily done through the faith-based community, you know, the city did have a hand in in some of the efforts that, you know, that some of the things that that we were doing, because obviously we weren't passing the buck. It was still, you know, it was still an issue that we we all had to had to address. So both at the community level and at the city level. So essentially, in 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 looking at, you know, in in writing this report and 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 seeing the value of a community-based effort, a lot of the resources that that will we be looking at to, you know, to address immediate needs would come from the faith-based community anyway. But of course, you know, the city, we would still be looking at options like we would still be looking at, you know, obviously, long-term, you know, long-term issues or or even immediate issues. We would still be working with the group, providing them direction on things that, you know, that can and can't be done in the city. It's it's definitely, it's definitely not us passing the buck if we decide to disband the committee. The city would still have a role in it. But but yes, it, you know, at this point, I would, I would probably say that the homeless liaison officers and PD would still be heavily involved with the efforts because they are the ones working with CityNet. CityNet would probably have a seat in this as well, because they are the boots on the ground, working directly with, you know, working directly with our homeless population. So hopefully that sheds a little bit of light on what we envision as far as a faith-based, community-based effort.
That's really good. Our city, our city club actually really articulate. I really appreciate that. So basically that if we go with that recommendation, so our committee liaison will inform us by a report every other two months, am I right?
From the PD?
Yes. PD, okay. So may I have a motion? I think that's a really good recommendation. Any member of council want to initiate any, any motion?
So I mean, that that makes sense. I mean, we don't want to handcuff handcuff them and make it, you know, a job to just, you know, put together agenda items and minutes and quorums and all that. So if 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 disbanding it, but also but also giving them a place to meet and have the police department work with them, if that makes it easier, more productive, then sounds like a better idea. So, yeah. I'm for it. I'll make a motion to to move in that direction to disband and have them work directly with the faith-based groups and also with the police department. And have the police department help them coordinate whatever, whatever resources and information they need.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and second for this item.
So I have, I have a motion by council member Monzo and a second from council member Doe, and that is to disband the task force. So council member Doe?
Yes.
Council member Ho?
Yes.
Council member Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Todd?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. Next item, seven point, two appointments to city boards and commission. So city club going to mention all the all the vacancy and I have to recommend a candidate. So there is council member Doe and vice mayor.
Yeah, for for me, I, you know, because we banned homelessness task force, so I don't have to.
Is there anywhere that we can have city clerk go to call, you know, like all the vacancy, you know, by order? If vice mayor? Wouldn't mind. Okay, so city clerk?
Okay, so for the commission on aging, Mayor Todd?
I would like to recommend Mr. Vinno? Aging, right?
Yes.
Okay. Vinno?
Okay. And then for commission on aging, also council member Doe?
I would like to defer to the next people, please.
Next, we have the community services and recreation committee. So that would be for Mayor Todd.
I'd like to recommend Mr. Vinno again, yes.
Then we have our personnel board. We did not receive any applications, but we do have the public education category available and also the religious category and a second alternate, if anybody would like to assign any member to those committees.
So the candidate, they have to submit an application?
I'd like to recommend Anna Wells.
As a second alternate?
She she's already there. I mean, Anna Wells already.
But can you put it on the educational?
The criteria for education are very specific. Yeah. She didn't qualify for public education.
Okay, no.
So at so at this point, if anybody, if you know of anybody or anybody in the public who would like to apply, we in the future, we have a, we have these opening, public education category, you have to be an employee of the public education system at some point. So a teacher, administrator, superintendent, board member, something of that nature. And then religious category, you need to be you need to be a member of, you know, something religious within the city.
Yeah. My understanding is that we don't have any apply for it right now. So, you know, we continue to speak for candidates and then why don't you bring it back to for us later on for next?
We were hoping we would get some late applications maybe, but you know, but we we didn't. So this is my sales pitch. If anybody would like to apply, you know, please contact my office.
For the second alternate, it doesn't have to be, can I just, I had know somebody that I think is interested, can we just for the second alternate?
You can, you can make a point, you can make an appointment contingent upon qualifying. So you know, we've, we we sometimes do that, but you can make an appointment and we'll make sure that that person submits an application, we'll verify everything and make sure that there's some qualified.
Okay, I would like to round this myth and I'll get to your info.
Okay.
Right.
Retired teacher, is that, does that qualify?
Retired? I I don't think there's anything in the bylaw that addresses if they're retired. But let me look at that real quick for you. See, one member selected from among officers or employees of the public education institutions. Didn't say anything about retired.
But didn't say no either, right?
Didn't say yes, doesn't say no. Didn't say yes, doesn't say no.
Is it, can I suggest that we went into next time so that we see that, that the qualification, that person before we, we ask for the, you know, appoint anybody at this point?
For the public education and religious?
Yep. You know, I.
We can.
Anna Wells expressed interest in, in to appoint that public education category. See where retired teacher for San Ana's School District. Was that qualified? Could you look into it and let me know? Either way, doesn't matter. Let's see, express interest.
Okay, we can, we can look into it. But we'll, altogether, we'll defer those two regular members for public education and religious then. And then a contingent, you know, we'll appoint Rhonda Smith as an alternate contingent upon qualifications.
These bylaws are passed by the council, correct?
I'm sorry?
The bylaws for this, the committee are passed by the council?
Uh, yes.
So the, so the council can either modify them or they can interpret them. So if the council chooses to interpret it to, to include a retired person, you could do that. Or you could formally amend it if there was a, a problem. So I'm just saying that's an option.
Yeah, this is, and this is by ordinance. So at some point, if council would like to amend it, we can do it at a future meeting.
If a councilman, if there hasn't been any applicant, applicants and Councilmember Doe has somebody interested, then I think we, we should allow it.
Well, so Anna Wells is currently appointed as a first alternate.
Okay.
So she is on the committee, you know, again, as a first alternate. But for, you know, public education, if the council chooses to, you can appoint her as public education.
Like I said, you know, I'd like to review the, the application, the qualification before I, I vote on it. So if you, if you recommend it right now, I, I will abstain my vote. I, I, I can't.
Well.
I, I think that we have to vote for it, right?
Yeah, no, you, you will have to vote on this slate. So, I mean, we can, if, you know, we can defer it.
Yeah, I think that, yeah.
We can defer it.
All right. So City Clerk, can you continue for?
So for the next one, we have Traffic Commission, Mayor Ta.
I would like to nominate.
And the homelessness task force was disbanded. So we need a motion and a second.
Take a motion to approve as, as a motion, as recommended, with all the nominees they were named.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Can you repeat that?
And if I could, before you vote on it, let me just get clarity on item number C, which was the Personnel Board. Are we taking no action on that whatsoever at this point? Or it's, it sounded as though we were and then, but there was also another name Rhonda Smith thrown out for as an alternate. So.
I think we should, right?
I think, I think we're putting that one off is what I heard.
Right, right.
So the motion is to put that one for the next meeting.
Right, okay.
Okay, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Abby, can you read that? Who appoint, you know, who being appointed?
Okay, so for the Commission on Aging, Mayor Ta appointed Vin No. And Councilmember Doe would defer to the next meeting. For our Community Services and Recreation Committee, Mayor Ta appointed Vin No. For the Personnel Board, the Public Education category and the Religious category were deferred to the next council meeting. And Rhonda Smith was appointed by Councilmember Monzo contingent upon qualifications as a second alternate. Then for the Traffic Commission, we had Mayor Ta appoint Ta Nguyen. And that is it.
Thank you so much.
I, I thought, I thought that the City, the City Attorney said that even for Rhonda Smith is going to be next meeting, next council meeting.
Yeah, that, that was the point of my clarification.
Yeah, I think.
We're putting, we're putting that off till next meeting, the Rhonda Smith.
Yeah, correct.
Do we have to modify that or no? Are we good, right?
No, we're good. We're good.
Right, okay. So next we have comments and requests for agenda items from City Council, agency members, including AB 123 for report when required. So who would like to go first? Vice Mayor?
I, I can go first. I have nothing today. So.
So you have nothing today?
Just welcome to the interim Chief, uh, Police Chief.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Ho? You have anything, Councilmember Ho?
I just have one thing.
Okay.
Well, before I do that, I just wanna thank Abigail Akala. He did such a good job. Thank you for, Christine, thanks for allowing her to make her debut tonight. And I wanna welcome back interim Police Chief. The last time we seek your service was about four years ago. So we hope very soon you're gonna have a, a permanent Police Chief. Thank you for filling in. I would like to see if we can put on the agenda, if I could ask staff to look into see how tiny houses that I heard so often about, especially recently, and see how these tiny houses could help address homelessness. I know that that's not a new thing, not within the recent years. I think it's been around for at least three to five years. And just to see if there's anything we could make use of in regards to these tiny houses. And we wanna see if we can, we can do some, we can put that, we can agendize that and talk about it.
Anything else, Councilmember Ho? Thank you. So Councilmember Doe?
Okay, we, I'm agendaizing so we could be.
Oh, so you want to agenda, so I honor that request.
So that was a motion by Councilmember Ho and a second by Mayor Ta to agenda staff researching tiny houses to address homelessness. So Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Councilmember Doe?
Oh, thank you very much. You know, I don't have anything to put on the agenda tonight, but just wanna take this opportunity to welcome the interim Chief of Police, Chief Campbell's. I just wanna, I heard some good news. I've got a chance to talk to the City Manager earlier today and I heard that the city have received a, a large number of vaccine for the resident. So that's, that's a very welcoming, very good news for our residents. So I'm, I'm gonna let the City Manager address this. Well, thank you for, thank you staff for all your hard work. It looks like, you know, we can continue going with this rate. We will be, the county will be reopening around March 17. So that's a pretty exciting news for the resident and businesses. So thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Manzo?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Again, I'd like to thank all the council for all your, your hard work. We still seem to always forget about, council's always thanking everybody, but I wanna thank the council for your, your hard work. You know, it's not easy having your regular job and then doing, doing this on top of that. So thank you, guys. Also, thank you for staff for all your hard work. Like always, you guys are, have multiple hats going on and I'm amazed at how, how hard you guys work. So thank you very much for that. I also wanna look forward to meeting our new interim Police Chief. I haven't met you. I heard good things about you. So I look forward to meeting you soon. And also just wanna thank everybody for being safe out there and looking out for each other. And also, like Councilmember Doe said, and we had some good news for our residents in the vaccines and look forward to having that mobile pod site come to our community. And we're looking forward to better days ahead and getting over, over this, this wretched virus we've been living with. And hopefully, at the end, it's made us all appreciate the, the small things in life and appreciate what we have and who we have amongst us and appreciate our neighbors and family members more. So thank you all. Let us see you, see you next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manzo. I'd like to thank everyone for your time and your dedication. I also want thanks all the staff, especially who working for Community Service and Recreation Department. I know that the staff there work really hard to make sure that our senior have the vaccine and any senior have any issue, you know, our staff, they ready to help. And I'd like to welcome back interim Chief of Police. I had opportunity to work with you before and now it's my honor to work with you again. But with that, I'd like to ask our City Manager to give his report and also officially introduce interim Chief of Police, City Manager.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, with the departure of Chief Lauterback, I had appointed Darren Upstil to be Acting Chief for a couple of weeks. And during those times, I was able to, and I was fortunate to definitely locate Chief Roy Campus to come work with us as an interim chief. As we heard earlier tonight, he was with us from June 2016 to February 2017 in the past, and we've all enjoyed working with him. And I wanna thank him sincerely for accepting to give us the help we need at this time. At the same time, we are going out for full recruitment of a full-time Police Chief as soon as possible. With, with that, I would like to have interim Chief say a few words, please, for, to the council and the community. Interim Chief, are you with us?
You're on mute.
We'll, we'll try to unmute you. Hold on, Chief. See if we can manually do it. Got it now? Nope, you still have to, you still have to unmute yourself. Hit the red microphone.
How we doing?
There you go.
Doing, very good. Technical difficulty, I apologize to everyone. My warmest, my warmest thanks and appreciation, Mr. Mayor, Tita, respective council members, our City Manager, and of course, our, our fellow department heads. A good evening. I have over 40 years of police experience from entry level to Chief of Police. And I must say, especially after having been here for a six-month tenure four years ago, that I'm so happy and proud to have been asked to come back and serve our city and serve our police department as interim Police Chief. During that 40 years, I've worked for some of the largest police departments in Southern California, including Los Angeles Police Department, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, and even departments with as few as officers as 30 police personnel. I'm real happy to say, I'm real happy and proud to share with all of you, including the public, that with those experiences over 40 years, I've had firsthand observation of the operations of the city of Westminster in general and of the police department. And you must know, I must share with you, that the work that is being done by city staff at City Hall, the work that is being done by the civilian and sworn members of the Westminster Police, Westminster Police Department are as high, as top shelf as any place that I have worked. There may be some that are as professional and proficient as our partners in Westminster, but I have not witnessed anyone exhibit more professionalism than here in Westminster. That's what makes me so proud to have been asked to come back to serve our community. And I'm very happy to share that with you. The priorities for me will be to continue to lead our police department as safely and professionally and organizationally healthy as possible, combined with helping the city with its recruitment for a permanent Police Chief. And as our City Manager said, we will commence that as soon as possible. But with that, I just wish to say thank you very much for this honor. I am very much proud to have been asked. Thank you all. Thank you so much. And it is our honor, Chief, that you are willing to come back. It is our honor, actually. We'll appreciate everything you said. I think our, our police officer, our city staff and other member on the City Council greatly appreciate everything you've done and you continue to do for Westminster community. Thank you. And anything else from our City Manager?
No, thank you. Just the, the mobile pod, as one was mentioned earlier today, is gonna be on Sunday from, from nine to three in the East West Room in the Civic Center. So please contact Community Services for more details. And that's going to be, I believe, about 500 vaccines available to be given. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, our City, thank you, our City Manager for that announcement. And with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, March 24, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We adjourn.